Good. Well, hi, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us today. I'm very excited to present to you Cara Chambers and Lee Burbage from The Motley Fool. So I personally heard of The Motley Fool first when I was a teenager. My father would send me over articles to instill some early type of financial literacy in me. He'd say, you know, "Look, please have a read at this. And don't worry, it's not boring or complicated. Any fool could read it." I really didn't expect that 15 years later, I would actually meet the people behind The Motley Fool. So I'm very thrilled to introduce you to our speakers today. Short bios: Cara Chambers is the VP of People Insights at The Motley Fool. In this role, she drills into the data to keep fools engaged and happy at their job. So before joining The Motley Fool in 2005, she received her BA in Journalism from Loyola and her MBA from Pitt. And then second, we have Lee Burbage, who leads People and Culture. Him and his team are behind some of the innovative workplace practices that we'll be learning about in our session today. So more broadly, Lee and Cara will be giving us their view on how human capital and trust can be managed differently amidst the financial industry. After their presentation, we'll be having a Q&amp;A session. So please submit your questions as we go along. Cara, Lee, when you're ready, please take it away.
Great. Well, thank you so much for having us. This is super fun. I wish we were there. We'll do this over Zoom beautifully. Cara and I have provided our backgrounds of Alexandria, Virginia, where we are based and actually we both live. And it has a little English flair to it. It's a nice colonial town, so I feel like we fit in nicely. So yeah, thanks so much for having us. We're going to just talk through a bit of the ways that we run our people and culture at The Motley Fool and where we've had successes. It's always important to note that we've been doing this for a while. So I've been with The Fool over 20 years. Cara has been here 13, 14 years. So we're lucky enough to work with two incredible co-founders who care deeply about the people that work at the company and give Cara and I great autonomy in testing and learning into new ideas. And we absolutely love talking with other people, going to conferences like this and learning what other companies are doing, and benchmarking and using others' ideas as well. So don't think that this was all cooked up overnight. Don't think that it's all perfect or that we invented it all ourselves. But this is what works for us. And our hope is that others can learn and have some takeaways that would work in your own businesses or lives or wherever you are, where you're trying to make difference and change. I think some of these sort of principles and approaches are widely applicable. So you'll hear us talk a lot about the word "trust", and it is paramount in the way that we operate at The Motley Fool. We have a great amount of autonomy and deep caring. And those two things combined, we believe fairly beautifully, to create a culture where people can succeed. When I meet people for the first time, when they first join the company, I like to tell them how excited we are for them to be with us, that our hope is this is the last job they'll ever have, that we want them to come and to stay with us for the rest of their entire career. And we want them to be sure that they're going through our orientation, not to become assimilated into the way that we do things, but to bring who they are. So we believe in hiring great people and letting them do great things. And they're sort of wrapped around in this culture of caring and trust.
All right, I'm going to jump in on the second bullet and talk a little bit about, we are a financial company. You'll hear me talking today a lot about metrics and how we measure it. And we believe it's not mutually exclusive to have a financially successful company and to have a very caring and supportive culture. And so we measure two things on our team. On the people team, one is our engagement, which you'll hear a little bit more about. The other one is our revenue per employee. So we keep our financial metrics top of mind for our HR team as well. That's a metric we use in our team. It's a measure of efficiency, making sure we're hiring people and they're performing at that level.
Yeah, so not unlike some of the things that you heard earlier in earlier presentations, we have great balance. We believe we can have a loving and caring and successful culture financially and in terms of happiness. And so Cara and I would like to use our time today to talk about some of the ways that we do that. And a big part about that is what we call curating signals. So Cara and I have spent some time trying to really understand what it is that people want and need from their employer and how we can provide those things in ways that are accessible, not scary. We like to say that our programs are compelling and not mandatory. And so we work really hard to build programs that people want, that they are looking forward to. So you'll hear about it a little bit later. But a good example is, think about the last time that you got some feedback or you were sitting down with your boss and maybe the anxiety that you had. And instead, think about looking forward to that meeting. "I can't wait to go get my feedback," is not something that you hear often. And that's sort of the way that we operate.
Yes. And speaking of statistics, this is one of my favorites. We ask this question every year in our surveys. We've been surveying for over 10 years. And we ask people, "Do you feel like someone cares about you at work?" And this score has been consistently in the mid-90s throughout all the economic times, the reorgs, whatever's going on in our company. If we're having a down year, the score is always very high during COVID. It really is just a signal that our culture is extremely resilient. So we've been watching this. And we feel like this is a foundation of our culture, this very caring approach in here.
Yeah, and I mean, it's important to think about and maybe unique that, "Hey, I'm at work and someone here truly cares about me as a person." And it's that connectivity. It's that getting to know the individual and not having sort of universal programs that just address everyone, but instead setting things up for us to have that personal connection that is very important to us. And again, we've been doing this for a while. So Tom and David started this company over 27 years ago. And we are based in two co-founders that are two of the most caring people that you would ever meet, two incredible leaders for a company. And so we're very lucky in that way. And you can see their DNA in everything that we do. So some of the things that they embedded in the company in those very early years of working with their friends and caring for one another still exists today in our company of over 500 people. And again, to Cara's second point earlier, we're finding great success. So we're a private company. We don't share a ton of our individual business statistics, but we are serving over a million customers globally. And I can tell you, there's no better company doing what we do in the world. Our success ties in, we believe, just beautifully with how much people care, how invested they are in their work. Those smiles that you see in that photo there are very real. Even at a company of 500, Cara can tell you individually about each one of those people, where they want to go with their career, what they care about, their strengths, what areas maybe that they're working on. And that's a big part of who we are.
Right. And you'll see I've added on here, again, our team, one of our team's goals is to keep our engagement above 90%. And so we're currently in 92. We're very proud of that over the past year. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about how we measure that. But again, it isn't just going out there and telling the world, "You have a great culture." It's about measuring it and adapting as you go and helping make it better every single year.
I had to laugh when we first started. And Danielle did such a good job of introducing us and throwing out titles. We sort of giggle at that because we typically only use those externally. We find people really need those to have some sense of like, "What do you do?" And titles do a good job of communicating that externally. But internally, we really don't have a lot of the usual trappings of a company in terms of lots of policies. We try to shy away from strict policies. And instead, as I said, get to know the individual, give them great autonomy to do amazing things. And so we've never had serious titles. We've never tracked time off. The complexities of the world today, we don't find lend themselves well to really strict policies and strong micromanagement of employees. And so you won't find any of those things at The Fool. We do have some guidelines in place. And for a few areas of the business, we do have strict policies in terms of, you know, things that are in the legal world. But we really do try to just get to know those people as an individual and make the best decisions we can, given whatever situation that we're in.
Righty. Okay, so this all sounds great. But these are some questions we've gotten from our employees and people externally that are challenging. And I think for us to, we want to just share with you a little bit of kind of the naughty problems we have to unravel in our jobs. We can't say, "Have no titles, have no policies, just do whatever and hope things are fine," right? So it comes with some interesting complexity, which is how we spend our time. So things like pay and progress is very important. We're all very much trained, I'm speaking to a lot of people in academia, about where do I stand, what's my score, what's my number, right? So getting people kind of out from under that is a little bit too. So we're going to talk today about, we have set up systems of having signals for our employees. And our job is to make sure that they're consistent. The thing, speaking from a compassion standpoint, we mentioned this, but people can feel anxious if they don't know where they stand. They can feel, it just makes people nervous. And that's not, we would get feedback from our employees saying, "But I want a performance review," and things like that. Or, "I want some policies because I want to be told," right? And so we look at the signals. And most companies use maybe two or three of these. And we use all six to make sure we're taking care of everybody from all sides. And flip the next one. Okay, first one is surveys. Again, that's how we measure where we're going. It's how fools give us direction, how to help us prioritize. And really quickly, these are the three standard industry survey questions we check. Again, we're very proud to see these scores continuing to go up. I believe that this is very much a conscious capitalism golden rule one. If our employees still that they are proud to work here, then we feel like we're doing right by a lot of our stakeholders because our employees very much care about our stakeholders in there. And we keep an eye on turnover, which we keep low. But this is a great question to ask if you are trying to predict turnover. It's usually pretty accurate in there too. And sometimes you'll see people talk about life changes in that last one here. So it's almost never at like 100, but we try to keep that as high as possible too. And again, today we're talking about the things that we did. We've always had good scores, but we really wanted to make them better. So we've spent the past four years really working to improve these numbers and diving in and looking at what our employees' concerns were. As I mentioned before, they're looking for some consistency and direction and guidance about where they stood and making sure they didn't have any mixed signals.
And again, those are just the last four years. But we've been doing pretty heavy surveying, at least twice a year for the last 10 years. And so we have a lot of data. We really, we got excited when Google first started talking about people analytics about 10 or 11 years ago. And we've definitely have been totally bought in to trying to use data to make a difference. We also use automation. And so Cara and I designed and built a tool that we use called Foolworks that powers some of the pieces of this puzzle of signals. And what we found was, when Cara and I first looked out at the tools in the industry, there was a lot of heavy HRIS, human resources, performance management systems. But what we needed was really more of a project. So I mentioned before, we want people to, a project management system. What we realized was, we want people to come to work at The Motley Fool and stay forever. And by the way, they typically do. And so we think about your career, your long career, as kind of a long project. And so we built this tool to allow employees to have different touchpoints that would manage their happiness, their career growth, where they're headed, and sort of create the story of their career at The Motley Fool. So you'll hear us mention Foolworks maybe a few times during the presentation here. And just know that that's sort of a backend project management tool that we designed to help us facilitate. But our approach is typically to marry technology and automation, still with a human touch. So each thing that's built into Foolworks facilitates a discussion or the signal, as Cara mentioned.
And I always like to say that the survey tells us the macro story and the coaching tells us the micro story. So we have a lot of volunteer coaches around our company that are out there kind of just hearing every single person's individual story. We used to do it ourselves, or Lee did it all himself when we were small. But as we got bigger, this is kind of how we've scaled that, but preserve that individual piece in there.
Yeah, when we were smaller, I was able to go out and meet with every individual and ask them questions and take some notes and sort of manage it myself. And then as we've gotten bigger, we needed a system to help us take in all of that information. And what we find is, every person needs something. And so with every person we check in, we're asking simple questions like, "How happy are you? What do you need? How can we support you better?" And there's a takeaway from every meeting. Some people need about 1% change in their work-life. Some people need 99% change in their work-life. And as Cara mentioned, we've empowered employee coaches to help us manage those checkpoints. And as we go through the bullets here, the different signals, you'll see there are just all kinds of different places where we feel like an employee can look to get a signal about how they're doing or to send us a signal about what they need or where they need help. POV is a great example. Cara, do you want to talk through this one a little bit?
Sure. So POV, again, came from where we wanted to help managers have these more direct career conversations with their employees. What you find, a lot of people, even when they're having one-on-ones, it tends to be very operational. And you have to really, even your highest performing employees, you really have to like push them to have a career conversation, especially as you grow. So we, our tool kind of gives the manager and the employee, if you'll see on both sides of this, pair notes, ask some questions about how you're doing. What signals are you really getting? Is the person hearing them? Just kind of helping them drive towards a better conversation. And it's informative for the manager. And we gently bring them in there, right? Without giving them a performance rating system. We just kind of help them have a really good conversation about their career and make sure they're not hearing anything mixed in there, right? So maybe this person, they're having a conversation with their manager, but maybe their other coworkers, you see the red in there saying, "You know, I'm feeling my other coworkers don't value my work," or something like that. It's a great prompt for a manager to have. So what we try to do is set it up and make it easier for our managers to have those conversations.
What we found is that if you're getting mixed signals, that is a real problem. So we're coaching people to have consistency in whether you're going through our feedback, whether you're having your POV, you're having a coaching session. Are those signals all consistent? And so you can see here in the slide, we're highlighting where there may be some inconsistencies. And that's a great talking point for a manager and employee to say, "Hey, why did you answer this differently than I did? Let's have a chat about it." And especially for those of you that are in an agile world or the really day-to-day task management, what we found was those manager discussions are often very daily focused. And so this is a good chance to step back and say, "Let's have a broader discussion about the signals I'm sending and the signals you're getting, and let's make sure we're aligned."
Absolutely. And then, I'm not going to spend too much time on this, but what it also does is it guides the manager. We've written kind of five different ways, pieces for managers to have the theme of their conversation, what they might see. And I'll just talk briefly about one. All HR people love to talk about like the bad conversations they have to have, right? And so in every company and at any time, there might be a time where things just aren't working out. So one thing I like to call it is we deliberately use the word "worry" to say, "If someone is struggling," and in my definition is, it means neither the effort nor the results are there. We really coach the manager to say, "I'm worried about you." And again, coming from a place of compassion, not, "You've gotten a one out of five on your performance rating. You need to turn it around." It's very much, "I'm worried." And that kind of can relax somebody into opening up. Again, a lot of times what we found out in the world is people just don't know, right? And they just don't know what signals they're getting. And so opening that conversation up, making it less scary. You're not coming in with a clipboard and an envelope with some documents in this meeting. You're just starting that and saying, "I'm worried about you," right? Sometimes it's all you need. And again, there's lots of other ways. There's unleash. You could be telling the person like, "Hey, we want to encourage you to do more, take on more. You're ready," right? Where can we unleash you? Those are fun conversations too. But we have five different types on there. But I think, thinking about when you're in HR, you hear a lot about like how to have the bad conversation. And you do that with compassion. You can do that. So we don't like to say our culture is all optimism. No one ever has a tough conversation. What we're saying is, when we do, we come at it from a very caring approach here.
A lot of these too, you can see that if you're having a very long-term view, if you're going to work here like I have for over 20 years, the chances that you're in each one of those or having each one of those types of conversations at some point is very high, right? Most people's careers aren't straight up and to the right for 21 years. And by stepping back and realizing like, "Wow, I don't have the pressure of like, I'm going to get fired tomorrow." We want you to, we work hard to hire great people. And by wanting them to stay, it opens up our opportunities to say, "Hey, where are we right now? Let's have a discussion about that." If you heard David's introduction earlier, you heard that, you know, he is an investor. We are an investing company. We have the same approach to our investing, buy great companies and hold them for a really long time. And we use that same philosophy internally. And so, you know, just because a company you love is maybe having a downturn, doesn't mean you should immediately sell. We feel the same thing about our employees. So we're fairly famous for giving second, third, fourth chances, continuing to work with people to get them into the right place. One of the things when we did notice was though, that people really do want feedback. And Cara and I like to read a decent amount in this area. And I mentioned earlier, wanting to go to your feedback session, that's typically not going to happen if you know it's going to be a negative experience. Human nature is, you just tend to shut down and not react well to, "Hey Danielle, here's all the stuff that I need you to do better. Here's where you're struggling." She's like, "Oh God, I got to go meet with Lee again and talk about where I'm not doing great." But think about if I said to Danielle, "Hey, I want you to come to a meeting and I want to tell you about where you're just doing incredible work and where you can double down on that and do even more." So we tend to focus in on the zones where you're doing well and try to get you to do even more of that. So our feedback is fairly straightforward. We only ask these three questions. "Where have you seen my strengths in play? What future value could my strengths unlock? Where could I use that in even more places? And then, 'What's one thing I can do to make your life easier?'" We feel like these are really accessible questions, powerful questions that really help people understand how to play to their strengths. I won't go through our entire feedback process, but another thing that we've done is, this feedback is curated and delivered by your coach, not your manager. And you choose whether to share it with your manager or not. Taking the manager-employee dynamic out of things like feedback, we have found are also key to making it an easier, more accessible conversation that you're not stressed out about, right? And so if instead Danielle and I work in two different departments, I'm not her boss, I'm just here to help her understand what the people that she's chosen around her are saying that she does really well. That's a pretty fun conversation. We hope that she's looking forward to like, "Oh good, I get to hear where I'm awesome. I'll be there."
Yep, yep. All right. And then speaking of doing what you do best, I think one of our other favorite perks at The Fool is something we call "Gold." A lot of companies might do a peer-to-peer bonus program. This is a public feed in our company where people are tagging each other with our core values. They are giving positive feedback. When you give points, it means you get a little bit of money. It might be just a nominal amount. Every employee from every, at every level, has a budget to give out every month. And it really helps, again, signal what's important to other people. How are you driving value? And so when you're a coach or a manager, you're looking at the people that work for you and saying, "Where are there, what are my shining stars doing?" right? And this uncovered a lot of hidden talent. And again, this really, it drives performance. People, when they're feeling valued, I heard this quote about purpose. You feel like capital P purpose is like your big statement you put on the wall. But small P purpose is things that you're doing that makes other people's lives easier, that makes someone else's day better, right? So you've been just told that you are contributing, even if you're just having an off day and you have no idea what your company's big mission statement is. Someone, Hannah, has told me something that I've done right, I've done well today and I will continue to do that. That will be motivating. I'll go out in the world a little happier, a little smarter and a little richer. It's also public, so you see what other employees are doing and they learn from each other. They learn each other's names. This year, we've hired 100 people. And so that signal out there about who is doing what in this company? Who are the great people? Who can teach me? This is where you're getting it. And so this is a platform we use called Kazoo. But there are a couple other platforms out there for peer-to-peer bonuses. But I can't stress enough that public, very frequent recognition. It's reset every month, so everybody has to use it every month. And that has really been a nice signal for people. And I'm going to close it a little bit by just talking about overall rewards, right? You can't talk about performance without rewards. We do, when we look at compensation, we do a couple things differently. But we've done a case with Oxford recently, talking about this concept we just did called "Ask for a Raise Day." It was about two years ago now. We didn't just do it. And again, this is an example of doing something kind of bold and crazy to just test the waters out there. So again, we kept hearing from our employees this kind of concern about where they stood or how do they know they're achieving. And what we really wound up doing is, we paid, we gave everybody the option, "Ask for a raise." We put it in our normal compensation cycle. And if you just went through the trouble of asking your manager and have, and again, you had to open up that conversation, you got $200. So a lot of people who would normally, a lot of women, a lot of introverts, people who just don't normally just run in and ask for money, they would show up kind of hiding behind the $200. "Well, you know, I can't give out $200. I feel like I should do this," right? But you wound up having these very fruitful conversations about performance and scope. And in a company without titles, there was a lot of unraveling to be done about, what's the true scope of your job? What are you really working on? Do we have alignment about what your level of responsibility is? It hopefully made our company more open about having these conversations. We give this presentation, a version of this presentation the first week to new hires, saying, "Don't be afraid to come talk about it." Again, we also had to coach up our managers quite a bit about how to have this conversation because we said, you know, "Your best employee could come to you any day of the year and say, 'I'm ready to go. I need a raise.'" So we forced it to give everybody kind of that dress rehearsal, stress practice. So that helped us test all the other signals. So we say, "How do you know, how do you get a raise?" We say, "By outperforming." "How do you know if I'm outperforming?" Well, you're looking at all those other signals. And when I wear my compensation hat, I always pay attention. Are you telling this person the same thing you told them through all your other communications? The other thing we talk about is, we do compensation reviews three times a year. And so that way, there's not a ton of recency effect going on around that once a year, one chance. As Lee said, if you're having an off quarter, I feel better saying to a manager, "Why don't you just wait four months, right? And let's readdress this." Or if someone's kind of in a weird spot, it really helps to lower the pressure. There's also opportunities. We don't give raises every four months to the same person, but maybe we do. And those are examples of when we can piece out a raise over time until as the person is easing into a job. With our low turnover, we do a lot of internal promotions. And so how you help pay for them and pace people's pay fairly has been important to us. And so this was a test we did two years ago. And it really helped us watch for, are we going to be losing anybody? We have to go out in the world. We wanted to remove the impression that people thought our culture's so great, we were willing to underpay people. And we said, "We don't underpay people." And so we did some research and we helped them with that as well. So that's been kind of our ways to kind of tackle compensation head-on by making it almost a little fun, if you can, and getting away with it. So even our employees that we said, "We did the research. You're being paid fairly, but thank you for asking. Here's $200." That's better than nothing, right? So people came away slightly less disappointed if they didn't get a raise when they asked. But at least they had the conversation.
And this is, this is a good example of really all of these zones, which is the kind of work that Cara and I love to do and love working with David and Tom on, which is taking very traditional things or we've always done it that way and trying to find a new and innovative way to attack it. So not having performance reviews or not having a culture where you're not allowed to ask for a raise. We love to break that stuff down. So I see where your time. Love to take any questions that anybody has. Danielle, I think you're queuing those up.
Yeah, thank you so much, Lee and Cara. Thank you for these very concrete initiatives. I think they give, you know, very tangible value to all the values we've discussed in past sessions today, including in the last session, the value to all the values we've discussed in past sessions today, including in the last session, the value of compassion was so so much highlighted. And I think you guys have really done a great job at translating that to the the day to day. So thank you so much. My first question today is, you know, after twenty five plus years, we understand that the Motley Fool has experienced or is experiencing very steep growth. Your co-founder, David Gardner, who was in the previous panel session, and I think he's he's still on the call with us today. He called it a late hockey sticking in one of our reviews. Could you share your perspective on how the Motley Fool's culture has impacted this business performance?
Sure. I mean, I I can start. I think there's some some conscious capitalist models here of care for your employees. And they were, they will care for your members, who will care for your state shareholders, who will also care for your employees, right? It's a beautiful circle of caring and compassion, and and I think that goes all around. I think if you're a member of ours, you have a pretty similar experience than if you're an employee or even our board members. So we hear from our board members that they love coming to our board meetings, which I think is also a rarity in the world, that they're like, oh, I still look forward to your board meetings. They're so fun, informative, so forth. So I think we carry through our approach with deep caring and understanding and long term view of the individual. We also have the same approach with our members, the same approach with our shareholders. So I think there's a tone. Karen and I have been talking about it recently with this move to remote work. We had some remote work before, but right now we're all working from home like a lot of people in the world. And so we've been dissecting a little bit, our culture translating from more of an office culture to remote. And it's funny, it's not about the physical tangible things. It's about the tone, it's about the caring, it's about how we treat each other. And I think you experience that with our with our members as well. And make no mistake, we have high performance culture. People here are, they work very hard, they want to do very well. And it's the same with our stock picking, stock picking and members. So our members are, they're they're having success with our products that helps too.
I would just add that we are laying, we've been laying the foundation to be, to have, be an employer of choice. So hopefully, one, we have a wonderful recruiting team. But they can tell you their jobs are more fun when they're not constantly having to replace the same positions, right? They're hiring, when we're hiring, it's for growth and we have new positions hiring. It's more fun and interesting and there's more opportunities. And so when we can be an employer of choice, we don't have to run a separate PR campaign. We are getting people coming to us because their friends and their family are telling each other out in the world, so those networks are better. And that that can help us grow. And in fact, I joke, almost all of our all hands, I always see some question like, as we grow, how are we gonna preserve our culture? And to me, that means our culture is very self policing, right? Saying our employees very much want to preserve it. They're asking me, they're putting me on the spot in front of everybody saying, but what about our culture? So will we measure it? So that's where it's come in.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. Another question we had is, how would you describe the Motley Fool's culture in relation to the finance industry more broadly?
We're a little different. So those of you who are familiar with the geography of the United States, we're in Alexandria, Virginia, outside of Washington DC. We are not in New York, in Wall Street. And I think that speaks a lot to kind of our irreverence and how different we are. We tend to get people who that sort of culture is not as interesting to them. Or maybe they've tried it and it wasn't who they were or what they were about. And and don't get me wrong, there's some companies there that have been highly successful. But I would say, if you were to draw some broad strokes, that would be a little bit more cutthroat, long hours, and we make up for it with what, I'll steal Cara's answer, which I know she's gonna give that typically when you're making a whole lot of money in a job that's battle pay, right? And so we we tend to find the the roles that pay the most, they're trying to make up for something, right? So you could go to Wall Street and work in a in a more traditional finance firm and maybe make more money. But they're they're trying to mask some things that just aren't present there, which I think are a lot of the things that we've described. So I would say irreverent, maybe if there was a word that I would choose.
Thank you. And so we've had some great questions come in from our audience. I'll start with the first one from Elzan. Thank you so much. So love seeing all these, all these tangible tools for building such effective culture. Thank you for sharing. Question is, how do you manage the hiring process? How do you find people who are compatible with this environment and also carry the culture?
I, yeah, I would just say that we add them, we try to be an employer of choice. And we have panels of internal employees that take it extremely seriously, pulling people from other groups and bringing them in. And we we do try to drive the conversation towards culture add versus culture fit. One of our recruiters and I were just talking about, in psychology, there is a concept called orchids and dandelions, humans. And so dandelions grow anywhere. And so you can find dandelions and they'll thrive whatever environment you put them in. But orchids, they don't thrive anywhere. And so we try to have a mix of people who would only thrive in our culture. And and they do incredibly well. And and so we we've been talking about that concept of finding unique types of people with different backgrounds, not being particularly obsessed with what what background do you have? And and having them join in and again, putting them in that right supportive environment has made people blossom. If I'm gonna torture this metaphor any further.
I would, I would add that build it and they will come is a little bit. So to be a recruiter at our company is to be someone weeding through a lot of incredible applicants who hopefully have an idea of what they're trying to sign up for. So Karen and I try to be overt, just like we're doing right now with talking about what it's like to work at the Motley Fool. We spend the bulk of our budget and time on making the workplace an incredible place for the people that are already there and then getting the word out about that. So the people that are applying, hopefully they've already, they know what they're signing up for. So if you're looking for more buttoned up, if you're someone that needs more structure in your life, you're probably not even going to apply to start out with. And the other thing I would say is, we have kind of a long interview process. I mentioned Google before, Google's a company that disagrees with that. I think they studied, Cara probably knows better than me, it's like two or three interviews is all it takes to find out if someone's gonna work or not. And they have all this great data to support that, and we don't believe it. So we just, we like to take a long time. We like to have a lot of interviews. And that's as much for us as it is the person who's looking for a job. We want them to talk to everybody that they can and really make sure that they they are making the right choice. Because hopefully it's for the long haul.
Great. So next question is from Viera. Aren't you worried that by using so many gamification tricks, you end up with people that have learned to play the game maybe better and not actually have their experience as? Yeah, and and they might still experience the company in a stressful way.
I'm not sure I completely understand the question, but I think what I would say is that as I, as I started with, these programs initiatives are iterative. We're always making changes and improving. We're surveying frequently. And so, you know, what our culture looks like today is not how it's gonna look like necessarily in the future. The programs that work today may not work in the future. Obviously, the world's changing, people change. So that's kind of the fun part, actually. Part of it is just paying attention to what's working and what's not and tweaking and reinventing things. Karen and I were just talking today about our three sixty feedback and some new ways that we could approach that. So, yeah, I guess, I think we just, we pay attention. What do you think, Cara?
Yeah, I would just add, you know, in terms of like, are they gaming it? We kind of joke every time we set something up, we'll say, huh, someone gonna game this? They might. If you can game all six, that's why there are multiple signals. If you're really gaming all of them, I don't know, more power do you, I guess? But I think we 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 try to make sure that, again, it's not, it's not any one thing, like you're gaming your performance reviews or something like that.
Oh, your, your answer is better than mine. Let's go with Cara's.
I think we're both great. Thank you.
I see the next one.
Yeah, so Irene is curious about pay transparency. So have you looked into if and how employees know how much different employees are earning and whether this is a positive or not?
I have been looking at it. I think our company is still a little too small without feeling like it's invasive of privacy to do something like a complete pay transparency. I mean, I think Lee would agree. And we have so many different titles and types of jobs. Again, it's a little too close to start like looking at someone, you'll be able to see someone individuals pay. So we've stepped away fully, but it is a continuum. We we've worked on, I think what we really talk about is the question behind the question is, how did you figure out my pay is my pay fair? And I think once people are comfortable with that, it's the first thing I teach managers and manager training is get your own pay out of your head before you start thinking about the people who report to you, right? Because it it's still a psychological component, no matter what. And I've seen, and and this could be a whole other topic, but there's some studies that show it's dry. Pay transparency drives median salaries down because people get uncomfortable. So I I've been looking at that. But again, there there's a continuum out there. For us, it just hasn't worked, but I'm interested in how it's applied elsewhere. It just might not be for us.
All right. Okay, our next question is from Lionel. How do we play a role as a thought leader and reward the companies in the stock market that are putting EOM principles in practice in the way that they do business? I really like this question. Follow up is, would you be ready to have a special index and push your clients to play more with the companies that are doing the right things for the planet, people and society?
I don't know if David is on the line. He would definitely be the better person to answer this question, but I can give a general answer of yes. So all of those things are important to us. And for a lot of our investing advice, we're looking at places like Glassdoor, for instance, to see how companies are performing as a culture, what their employees think about them. I don't think that we have a specific product tied to that, but it's certain, it's something that we have talked about. And that is definitely a big part of the discussion for probably all of the stock picks that our team is making, but.
I mean, sure, I'll add something real.
There's David.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, it's a, it's a great question, Lionel, and thank you. I I believe that you have to give people kind of a purpose statement for their own money and then let them figure things out. I I prefer that rather than a a club, an index that has the the good companies, the ESG companies and not the bad ones. So, you know, my watchword has been make your portfolio reflect your best vision for our future. That's what we tell our members. That's what we put out there all the time to anybody hearing me right now. I really believe that your money should be following your beliefs. The the problem with indices is that we believe different things. We may all want a better world, but you have a different idea than I do. So I would be the first to encourage you not to buy the stock I'm buying, but to buy the stock that you're buying. I think the more important point that Lionel underlines is that we are a thought leader and we're conscious of that. And we try to help people toward a conscious awakening around their money. After all, most people didn't receive any real financial literacy from their schooling or sometimes even their parents. And so they're left not understanding the stock market or what's going on in the world of business. So we we find that part of what we do is kind of remedial to get people just thinking that all these things matter and that you are included and you can be part of it. And of course, many of our best member stories are people who came from a place of very little and have ended up in a place of very much. So I like the question because I do think it's the right question. And we try to give that answer that I just provided. Now I'm going silent again because I'm just enjoying Lee and Cara and Danielle, thank you for these questions, all the ones that are coming in.
Thank you, David. Yeah, the next one, a question by Amy, it's one we also teased out in the case study that we wrote together. It's whether you could share some of the more difficult human dynamics that you have experienced and how you were able to turn that around.
Yeah, I was reading that question, wondering like, what's been our most difficult human dynamics? You know, the one that I've been thinking about is like, when, if you'll hear any of what we said, we talk a lot about optimism and defaulting to trust and assuming positive intent. Sometimes people spend a little too long in an environment that is not ours and they come in with their armor up, right? And their assumption is that they can't win unless someone else loses. And really just helping people unravel that. We may not be successful with that. You know, I was looking at that question, thinking, what are the most difficult human dynamics? But I think, if I say broadly, when I have someone who really is approaching it, they need to, someone else to lose in order for them to win, that's really kind of almost intractable. Like, they they usually wind up not succeeding at our company. What do you think?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I I totally agree with you. Sometimes people talk to us and and they realize the things that we're doing are harder than maybe some traditional practices out there. And so I think that can be a confusion that, you know, we're, for instance, not tracking vacation. And you're like, oh, that, you're doing that because it's easier. It's actually more difficult. It's more difficult to have a personal connection with someone. It's more difficult to try to take individual situations and make the best decision you can, given all of the information. It's easier just to have policies and to enforce them. And so having people come in from other business environments, more traditional environments that mostly dominate the world and adjust, that 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 can be something that some people do quickly. Some people not as fast, but realizing that, yeah, the things that we're doing, the approaches we're taking, we're not doing them because it seems more simple and Cara and I can take more vacations. It's because we believe it's the right thing to do and 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 because we found success as a company.
Right. Next question is from the customer's perspective by Robert. Writes, I've used Motley Fool before and didn't know anything about your culture and values. Do you use your values and culture to attract customers? If so, I'm not aware of it and it seems like a missed opportunity.
I mean, it's definitely something we talk about a lot. And especially as we get bigger and we have over a million customers and and so many products and services. So I think, I would say thank you for that feedback. And there's probably all of the extremes depending on what customer you are and what product you're experiencing. And so, you know, if you're deeply involved with David Gardner's Rule Breaker product and you're watching him on Motley Fool Live and you're on our discussion boards, I think you're probably feeling it there. If you're a fairly new customer and you've just joined, I think that's where we're focusing a lot. So we're talking about those first few days of a member and are they getting the fun and excitement and all the things? So, yes, I think, and 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 some of the cases of our members, you're absolutely right. But just know that we do talk about that and and I think we're, I think we're self aware. But no one has as much fun as Cara and I, so that's, sorry.
I'm just looking at another question or comment coming in from Lionel.
I have a question too that I might throw out for you to consider, Lee and Cara.
Yeah, hi, Megan.
Hello. So the, you know, I'm quite familiar with a lot of the aspects of your culture and the presentation that you gave provided insights into the platform that you guys use and all of the specifics. So if there's someone out there that's listening inside of their own company where they don't do any of these things, that can seem like a very overwhelming process to kind of go through. So what would be your advice to business leaders that have kind of this entrepreneurial spirit that want to start to bring some of these things into their company? What would you recommend that they might start with? Do you have any specific tools or tips or specific things that are first steps they could take?
I mean, surveying is a great place to start. Cara and I, when we did our first survey, we were scared to death of like, you know, when the results came in, like, oh, no, what are they gonna say? And now with each survey that comes through, I know David and Cara and myself and others are so excited to read the results. And then that sort of sets out the path for what we're gonna focus on the next six months. So simply starting with surveying, it's a really easy thing to do. And then a lot of the work that you'll need to do or where you have pockets where you can double down should be revealed. We work with a great company out of Australia called Culture Amp. But yeah, that's where I might start. How about you, Cara?
You know, I, going back even further, we did our first surveys in Google Docs or Google Forums, and so, sorry. So we did that. And I always remember a question about recognition. And it sent me down this path of really understanding why recognition was so important. And the tip I took away, and we, again, operationalized it. They said, set yourself a reminder, every day for twenty one days, write two sentences to someone on your team and telling them what a great job they did. And you will be happier and they will be happier. And so you don't need permission. Like, every, every single person listening to this can do that. And, you know. Um, and, you know, that, that's my go-to. It's free. Uh, and you're going to feel better at the end too, uh, bonus.
I think that's great. I have one other one, Danielle, if you don't mind.
Please, please.
So David, since you're, you're still on the line, this might be one that you want to jump in on, but I saw a question in the earlier part of the program, uh, on the panel that you and I were on together, where folks were asking about, uh, the similarities and the distinctions between economics of mutuality and conscious capitalism. And I know that the team at Motley Fool is, is quite familiar with both. And so that might be something that would be interesting for you to speak to for a few minutes to the folks that are listening here.
Sure. Um, well, I came across conscious capitalism first, John Mackey, the founder of Whole Foods Market, which is an amazing company that Jeff Bezos bought a few years ago. Uh, he came to our office and just shared a stump speech in front of our employees and talked about conscious capitalism. And I was like, I've not heard that phrase before. I like a lot of the concepts and I feel like we've been doing that in some ways. And, and I've been picking stocks of companies that do that, but it really gave a framework. Higher purpose, stakeholder capitalism, satisfy all your stakeholders, conscious leadership. And John Mackey is writing a wonderful book that comes out in a couple of weeks with that as a title. I highly recommend it because I'm reading it in proofs and it's great. And then conscious culture. And boy, if Lee and Cara don't do a beautiful job, not just presenting as authentically as we can today, but also of course they've built these things up over time. They've, they've learned what's worked and what isn't, and we, we love sharing it. So, so that was conscious capitalism. Then when I met Jay Jacob, who came to speak, Amanda, at a conscious capitalism conference, I believe you may have invited Jay to speak, uh, two years ago, um, my eyes were further open to the economics of mutuality, which I think is a great, uh, framework. I would say in contrast to conscious capitalism, it's a little bit deeper, richer and wider. I mean, um, I love what John Mackey's built and those four foundations, which any of us can trot off. Higher purpose, satisfy all your stakeholders, conscious leadership, conscious culture. You can build so many great organizations off of those foundations, but the concept from EOM that there are actually four forms of capital, not just financial capital, which the world is so good at these days, for the most part. But what about natural capital, how we're treating the environment? What about social capital? The critical factor of trust and human interactions. And then of course, human capital, which I do think that even though we're small, we are a world-class company at. And I think, I hope everybody's enjoyed, uh, Lee and Cara as much as I have. So, so to, to, to measure each of those independently. And, uh, there's a critique of the triple bottom line movement coming from EOM, which resonates with me. Because triple bottom line companies ultimately are translating all of those, uh, other forms of capital back into dollars. It's all getting translated back to financial capital. So I really appreciate about EOM that we learned that, no, you actually should just measure trust on its own ground. You're not just converting that to dollars somehow, and you should measure how you're treating the environment with inputs, uh, that matter. Now for some companies like ours, that's not as relevant, but for others, it's very deeply relevant. Anyway, the final message that I love from EOM is that it's all additive. I love the truism, I believe it is, that if you get better at one of those, it helps the other three. So many people in my experience operate with a trade-off mentality where they think you can't possibly be a compassionate, caring culture in the financial services industry. And we're actually, that's the best way to be, uh, a company is to be that in any industry. Or you can innovate off of a small R and D budget. You can do both. You, you innovate off a shoestring. That's, we've home brewed a lot of the things we're sharing with you. There's not any outside capital in our company here in year 27. So I, I think the message that if you just get better at social capital, it's going to help your financial capital and also your human capital and maybe your natural. I mean, that is such a great message. So anyway, I'm a big fan of both of these frameworks. I love all the people who are involved. They've really opened my eyes and, and continue to remind us the power of listening and learning from the world. And I want to just kick it back to, to you all, but let you know that Kara and Lee, as you, you're hearing, are frequently reading the latest research. They're challenging their own assumptions. And so it's that lifelong learning that's becoming almost a cliche, but it is true. Uh, it's not just about the MBA class. It's about every year after that and always having a mind awake.
Thank you. Thank you, David. Uh, we have another question coming in from Martin. Around usual practices in compensation and benefits, uh, which are normally pegged to one, one's role, department or profession. Um, now the question is, how do you create a culture of responsible equity with this? Um, I guess also in the context of there not being any titles at the full. Could you speak to that?
Yeah, I'd say it's something that we continue to work on. Um, but one of the purposes of Ask for a Raise Day is to bring the employee into that conversation. Um, so it isn't just their manager pegging, this is what your title is, right? It's an open conversation about, here's what I think my title is or, or what my job. I try to tell people, what is your job out in the outside world, right? And so, uh, we, we've spent a lot of time helping people articulate their job, not as, uh, I was just having a conversation with another person and we, we don't throw around titles as currency. We joke like, when we recruit for a job, you have to call it something, right? And so we, we like, we can't avoid them altogether. But I think just making sure that, um, we do layer it in, but we make sure that we are, um, we're open, as open as we can be about how we benchmark people. And, and I think that was a lot of the conversations we learned, uh, through Ask for a Raise Day.
Okay. Well, we have one, a last question already, uh, coming up, and it's, it's a great final question, um, by Robert. Uh, who's saying, you're doing a great job of leading in this area. Question is how, uh, where do you see the future?
I mean, hopefully with, um, a lot more trust and autonomy from every company around the world, right? So, um, unleash. Have enjoyed it and we have found great success. So, um, it, it used to be that we were kind of apologetic almost like, well, this is kind of the way we do things. We're a little sorry for how, you know, hopefully it works for you. And I think after doing it for so long, we're like, actually, we're pretty excited about what we do and you should do it too. So, um, I think we're, we're unapologetic about the way we approach things and, um, we hope other companies will do that as well.
Anything to add, Cara? Any final words?
No, I think, I think that, that's about right of just saying, it's not, uh, it's not a trade-off, right? You can do both. Uh, I think that's, that's where kind of we've been telling people and that's how you win.
All right. Good. Well, we are coming, uh, at the, the end of our slot today. Thank you so much. This has been a, a really insightful showcase of, uh, how we can build and sustain a culture for people. Um, and to really give meaning to, uh, the values that, uh, are, are often discussed in the context of conscious capitalism and the economics of mutuality. Um, so thank you so much for, uh, making that so concrete, so tangible. Um, Cara, you mentioned the case study that we've been writing together, um, that hones in on the Ask for a Raise Day. Um, we also tease out some of the question, other questions that were asked today, uh, including the question by Amanda on how other organizations could start their journey. Um, so, uh, everyone, please look out for it. And, um, last, I'd just like to thank the Motley Fool team again, um, you know, Karen Lee, but also Alison, who's worked, uh, who's helped us out a, a great deal on our work together. And of course, David, uh, thank you so much for, uh, for your time and for being here today as well. Um, and, uh, yeah, all the best to you all. Have a wonderful evening. Hope to see you all back at the forum tomorrow. Bye-bye.
Bye.
Thanks, everybody.